Good evening everyone and welcome to our January 9th, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Welcome everybody and Happy New Year. We could all stand for the pledge please?
.....................
It will be in need after the meeting, an executive session to inspect contracts and we have a special presentation today and that's the state champion boys cross country team and I'd like to introduce them to the stage.
Thank you. It's always fun to come to the board meetings to talk about accomplishments of one of our teams and this team has just been a phenomenal team representing our school district. Back-to-back state champions which is, you know, to win a state title is hard enough but to do it two years in a row with a majority of the same guys is quite an accomplishment. Their success in their sport, I think all the parents and anyone that's been following the team is aware, they 14-1 in the suburban council which is the toughest league in New York State. Back-to-back state titles, 19th sectional title that we won, 19 sectional titles, there's a lot of schools that haven't gotten one. But we've gotten 19, just Coach has built a great tradition in this program and the guys have really carried that on. State title number seven, like I said, back-to-back state titles. I think every invitational we went to this year, we came in first. You know, with cross-country, you know, you see the scores in the paper. If your child runs cross-country, you know how the scoring works. But the average person looks at the score and doesn't really understand, but the 15 points, the lowest score you can have in cross-country. And basically that means if your top five kids cross the finish line, you know, first place, second place, third, fourth and fifth, you add up those numbers, 15 points is the lowest your team can get. For sectionals, we scored 19. And so there was only a few kids that ran in between our top five kids, which is unbelievable. At states, which is the best of the state, we scored 25 points, which again is quite incredible. Our guys have just done a great job, like I said, last year and to carry it on into this year and the core of the guys are going to be back for next year. So just great accomplishments. We have phenomenal athletes but this group of guys, like a lot of the teams here at Burnt Hills, academics is the number one. And Victor GPA as a team, they were scholar athlete team, they had over a 93 GPA. So we got athletes that are doing well in the classroom and really performing well in their sport. So it's the best of both worlds right there. So just a great job, you know, great accomplishment. This was the first year that we won the Federation meet. Which a Federation meet happens after the state tournament and you know, the state championship is just your classification. So we ran against all the schools that were in class B. When you go to the next meet, you're running against all the schools, you know, from class A, B, C and D. And we won that meet. So that was unbelievable for our team to win that. We've gotten second a few times. And this is the first time that we won that meet. So just unbelievable. And then the following week, was it the following week or two weeks later? It was the regionals. And I know that's something that's on their mind for next year and we went to the regional meet and we got third place, which is obviously a great accomplishment. All the teams in the region competing and two teams go on to the Nike Nationals out in Washington, right? Oregon, yeah, out in Oregon. So that is, I'm sure, in addition to wanting to win a sectional title and looking to get another state title and going on for the Federation. I know that's something on the guys' minds that, you know, they want to bring Burnt Hills to the Nike Invitational. So I just wanted to congratulate them, you know, again, just a great representation of our school. We can't be, you know, we can't be prouder of all your accomplishments. You know, it's been awesome to watch you. So Coach is going to take a moment and introduce everyone to the team. And you know, this group of guys is a reflection of the man standing to my right. Just, parents know, I think anyone that's been around Burnt Hills knows what type of gentleman we have here and what he's done for our program. So I thank him and guys, congratulations. Coach?
Just starting with Dante Obrriaco, the brother of Otis. I have to get that in there. Evan Brennan, Nick Hunziker, Aiden Galouli, Colin Swain, Tyler Byrd, Michael Missair, Logan Short and David Metacarpas. And Kevin Board was also in the top 10 and wasn't feeling well today and so unfortunately, he's not here. But you know, first of all, I'd like to thank the board and the administration for doing this. And you know, cross-country is a sport that, you know, depending upon what the angle is, it kind of determines how much coverage you end up getting. The last two years, I mean, after the state meet, if it wasn't for one of the past parents, Pete Sheridan, who, you know, was down at Chenango Valley and then came out to Wayne. He, you know, took a picture when they were on the stand and sent it to the Gazette. I mean, I don't know if he's got a little bit of pull. But when we don't get enough coverage, I mean, I think they hear from him. And so fortunately, you know, with that, we were able to get at least a little bit of coverage in the paper. But you know, a lot of times, you know, we're kind of like overshadowed by other sports, whether it's football or soccer or, you know, whatever's going on that weekend. I mean, the weekend of the state meet, you know, you've got, you know, state stuff going on all over the place, volleyball, you know, soccer. And so we don't get a lot of coverage and I think that the last couple of years, you know, we were recognized by the town of Glenville, the town of Boston. But I think that this helps make the experience even more meaningful to have the recognition and the resolution that we're going to hear. You know, but I also, you know, have kind of neglected the last couple of times to thank the parents. And I mean, we have a great support group with our track club and with the parents, you know, being at all the meets and they're here tonight. So thank them and, you know, for the guys, you know, it can't start in terms of the process of getting to a state meet, you know, on the first day of practice in the middle of August. And I do think that whereas there are, you know, programs where they're doing workouts throughout the summer and the coach is there and it wouldn't happen without that. The truth is that when they run over the summer, they put it together themselves. They have a routine down of running here at the high school and also at Indian Meadows. You know, I'm not there, you know, people leave messages and let me know how that's going. But so much of this is on them and we wouldn't be successful without that summer running. And once they come into the season, I mean, they're already in pretty good shape and then it just, you know, takes a little bit more to get to the point of what we did this year. But I mean, I really mean this, so much of it goes back to them and their goals and what they want to do. And it's kind of developed over 20 some years. But I give them an awful lot of credit for what goes on, you know, much more than myself. So, you know, congratulations and thank you again.
Thanks Coach. So I'd like to recognize Tim Bronson too. Tim, would you come out also so you can be in the photos here with the team? Guys, we are so proud of you and we, you know, we do follow you and Coach, I hope you know, you know, people are always talking about how you guys do. And we do see that where it makes it in the paper, it gets sent around and articles and links get sent around. And we just, and just looking at you guys here today, just as a team and representing the school, also representing us academically and the way that you guys perform in the classroom, just we couldn't be prouder of you. So this is a, President Longton is going to be reading a resolution that we're going to pass. And one of the nice things about these, they seem symbolic or formal, but what it does is it takes your accomplishment and it puts it forever in the history of the district. These minutes get kept from the beginning of 100 years of Burnt Hills history and they'll go on, especially nowadays with everything archived electronically, on into the future. And you'll go in and you'll look this up 20, 30 years from now and you'll see, you know, the state championships get etched into the history of the district. We don't do this, we do win a lot of sectional titles and we win our fair share of regional, state regional titles. We don't win that many state titles and that's a really special thing, let alone Federation and moving on. So the regional, the top two of the national regional finals and we were third? So that's how close, you know. So have we ever had a team of any sport go farther on the regional level?
Well, we were second one year, actually with Mr. Mon's son. They were second at feds and they came back the next week and they were second at regionals and that was 2009. That was a special experience for those guys.
Sure. And Tyler qualified as an individual, so Tyler did run it.
Went to Portland.
Yeah, awesome. So we're so proud of you guys and President Longton is going to read the whereas statement. And then later, you guys don't have to stay for this part, but as part of the business meeting, the board will pass this resolution and it'll become part of the history of Burnt Hills. So have a listen.
Okay. Whereas the Burnt Hills-Boston Lake 2017 boys varsity cross country team of Tyler Byrd, Kevin Board, Evan Brennan, Aiden Galouli, Nick Hunziker, Michael Missair, David Metacarpas, Logan Short, Colin Swain and Dante Obrriaco won the New York State Class B Championship at Wayne High School November 12th, 2017. This is the second consecutive state championship with Aiden Galouli, Tyler Byrd, Evan Brennan, David Metacarpas and Michael Missair. Achieving medalist honors with third, fourth, 12th, 16th and 17th place respectively. And the team scoring at state meet program, low total of 25 points. And whereas, the team has won its 19th Section 2 championship and its 7th state championship. And demonstrated its outstanding teamwork by earning the best ever finish by a Burnt Hills-Boston Lake boys cross country team. And winning their first ever New York State Federation championship. And following it up by finishing third at the NITE Cross Country New York Regionals with Tyler Byrd finishing second place to advance to Nationals in Oregon. And whereas, the team also won the Gilderlin Invitational, the Baldwinsville Invitational, the McQuade Invitational, the Burnt Hills Invitational. And was named the Suburban Council Champion and finished with a suburban council dual meet record of 14 to 1. With team members Tyler Byrd, Evan Brennan, Aiden Galouli and David Metacarpas named Suburban Council Cross Country All-Stars. Tyler Byrd named the Times Union Runner of the Year, Aiden Galouli named First Team All-Star and Evan Brennan and David Metacarpas being on Second Team. And whereas, the team has exemplified the ideals of sportsmanship, cooperation, endurance, team effort and dedication to their sport. While achieving enviable success with a team-wide grade point average of 93%. And it is also hereby resolved that the Burnt Hills-Boston Lake Board of Education formally acknowledges its pride in having such representatives to carry the school district's name. And extends its congratulations to the team and the coach for their outstanding efforts and accomplishments. Wow, you guys. Not only should you be proud, but your dedication and perseverance is just so admirable. Congratulations.
Thank you.